Welcome to the youth service. Appreciate the youth choir singing and Ty and Jay Woo playing the violin duet before that. We're going to continue our theme, facing the giants in our life tonight. We'll talk a little bit more about this when we do announcements later on, but Josh is going to lead us in a few songs and we're going to take courage and we're going to slay some giants tonight.
All right, first song that we're going to sing is going to be 731, 731, Onward Christian Soldiers. And we heard this morning how we are giant slayers, so we can also think of Christian soldiers as synonyms with giant slayers. So let's sing this song with confidence and we'll sing verses one and two. Amen. Our next song is going to be 128, 128. And like how the second verse of 731 said, "How's foundations quiver at the shout of praise?" So let's continue to praise the Lord and focus on Him. This song that says, there's something about praise, you never know what it'll change. And when we fix our eyes on God, something, God really works through that. And for this song, it's going to sing verses one and two of I Sing the Mighty Power of God. I sing the mighty power of God that saved the mountain of Christ. As red the blood he's brought and filled the dark deep sky. And sweet the wisdom and warning of the sun to the day. Love will the glory to shine and all the stars alight. Sweet the grace of the Lord that will be earth with earth. In the glory of Jesus we shall be saved. For how our God is born is saved and I took my eye. He rise and be the crown and prayer for his upon the side. Amen. Our next song is going to be 410, 410. Standing on the Promises. We have a mighty God with a solid foundation. If we stand on Him, His promises are sure. And so let's sing this song knowing that we have His sure promises to stand on. And for this song, let's sing verses one, two, and five. Standing on the promises that rise by King. Through his great and great and great and great. Glory in the highest of the shah and sea. Standing on the promises of God. Standing on the promises of God. Standing on the promises of God, my Savior. Standing on the promises. I'm standing on the promises of God. Standing on the promises of when I come. And the Lord has sworn to have me in His hand. I know every word and motion I'll reveal. Standing on the promises of God. Standing, standing, standing on the promises of God, my Savior. Standing on the promises. I'm standing on the promises of God. Standing on the promises of when I come. Bless me every moment through the Spirit and soul. Rest me if I sin, my Lord and God. Standing on the promises of God. Standing, standing, standing on the promises of God, my Savior. Standing on the promises. I'm standing on the promises of God. Amen. Our next song is going to be 330, 330. Are You Washed in the Blood? And in order to stand on His promises, we need to be washed in that blood. And He can do that tonight for anyone who isn't saved. And for this song, let's sing verses one and four. The new king of Jesus will ascend to the mount of the Lord. And who will be his witness? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed, washed in the blood? Is the soul with the blood of the Lamb? Are you God's son, with holy wine and food? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? There will be a battle for the soul and the heart. Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed, washed in the blood? Is the soul with the blood of the Lamb? Are you God's son, with holy wine and food? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Amen. Great singing. Our next song is going to be 723, 723, Soldiers of Christ Arise. We're thankful He gives us the strength to do so and we're thankful to be on the winning side. And we're thankful to have the confidence that He will be with us. And you can see the verse there, it says, "Take unto you the whole armor of God that you may be able to stand." And we're thankful that God does give us the armor that we need. And for this song, let's sing verses one and two. Soldiers of Christ arise! And put your mother on. Come in the sacred house of heaven. And with your soul. Come in the Lord's clothes. And it is mighty how. To build a straight path, Jesus, from this holy ground. Standing with your God. And love is saved with the Lord. And take you to the Lord, the Lord. For the Lord is the God of all. I say to you, sweet Lord. May the Lord be with you. And all the lives of your people. And we will be with you. And before we begin prayer, our song is going to be 481. 481, Come Just As You Are. If you are not on the winning side, you don't need to do some spiritual training or anything. You can just come just as you are and He will not turn you away. And let's sing the song just as written. Orchestra, join us in singing and let's have everybody just start standing. Just as written. Come just as you are. Hear the Spirit come. Come just as you are. Come and see. Come receive. Come and live forever. Come just as you are. Hear the Spirit come. Come just as you are. Come receive Christ the King. Come and live forever. I have everlasting strength for today. Take the living water and never thirst again. Come just as you are. Hear the Spirit come. Come just as you are. Come receive Christ the King. Come and live forever.
As we look to the Lord in prayer, Brother Mark will lead us.
Our dear heavenly Father, we give you praise and thanksgiving. The opportunity to have you here in these meetings with us, Lord. We pray your blessing, each and every one, to continue through this journey today as we did Friday night and Saturday morning, this morning, Lord. We pray you'll be with us through this weekend. Sanctify those whom you may sanctify. Equip them with the Spirit of God if they're seeking for that, Lord. We pray that all of us will receive everything that you have for us this weekend, Lord. Bless us in a special way. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
We'll continue this service shortly with a young men's group that will sing and then they can open our testimony service. I see a lot of people that are very eager to give a shout of victory tonight. You know, as we look at facing the giants in our life, one of the best things you can do to be offensive in that battle is to give your testimony. Tell others about the victories that you have experienced through God's power. As we've looked so far into the Scripture, we see that God's people were cowering before the giant. They were afraid to stand, they were afraid to take action. And so often, that's the case with us, is we're afraid, as we heard on Friday night, we're afraid to stand. And really by our hesitation, our lack of standing, we're neglecting the glory of God. Because it's not until we stand and take a step forward that God can be glorified in our life. So let's not neglect His glory. Let's stand and testify about the mighty things that God has done. The young men will start the testimony service here and then we'll have a time for others to testify before Michael sings, Hancock sings last special. And we have a piano special as well. And we've got all sorts of specials here. And then Brother Shola will give the message. About 20 minutes after service, we will have pizza after we experience some more victories around the altars. Sunday School tomorrow. What time is Sunday School? 9:30. What time is Sunday School? 9:30. Amen. We'll be here at 9:30 in the morning. Worship service at 11:00. And then Sunday evening, we have service at 5:00 PM. All right? So we still have a lot of blessings to experience this weekend, but we'll continue now with the young men's group.
On a troubled sea, whenever there's a wind in my sail. Man, I have a friend who watches over me when the breeze turns into a gale. I know the master of the wind. I know the maker of the rain. He can calm the storm, make sunshine again. I know the master of the wind. Sometimes I soar like an eagle to the sky. Among the peaks, my soul can be found. An unexpected storm may drive me from the heights. Bring me low, but never brings me down. I know the master of the wind. I know the maker of the rain. He can calm the storm, make the sun shine again. I know the master of the wind. I know the master of the wind. I know the maker of the rain. He can calm the storm, make the sun shine again. I know the master of the wind. I know the master of the wind. I know the master of the wind.
Well, I'm so thankful for all God's done for me. Very, very thankful that I know the master of the wind. I like the song that says, "With Jesus in the boat, you can smile in the storm." I'm very thankful I have Him, especially when there's plenty out of my control and it's a good lesson for me not to try to control anyway. But I'm so thankful to have Him and so thankful that He saved me and sanctified me. I'm so thankful now I can say I have a wonderful wife. And there's a lot of things we needed to do before getting married. And it was a short time range, including getting a good enough job to get approved for apartment, getting the apartment, and I think something else, but I can't remember right now. But it seemed like a tight time span, but I knew God always took care of stuff when I just left in His hands. And I was thankful that I could look to Him and not be overly stressed just knowing that He has it in control and He doesn't have to do it too early. He can do it at the last minute and it's the right time. I'm so thankful to have Him and God is good.
I'm thankful the Lord's done for me and thankful that He saved me and sanctified me. And I'm thankful that He is the master of the wind, that He's in control of everything and that we can just trust in Him even when we may go down or low, but He's always there to help us. And thankful that He helps me every day. I want to go all the way with Him.
I'm thankful that God saved and sanctified me. Yesterday was an interesting day. I accidentally did something really dumb at the airport and was stuck up there for 12 hours. And I've never like done that, like anyways, it was crazy. But I'm thankful that at the end of the day, that God kept me safe and that I was texting my sister and she was like, I would have been horrified. And I'm just thankful that God was, I was definitely scared, but I'm thankful that God was, He just kept me safe through it and that I got to be here for the weekend. And I just pray that it'll hopefully go better on the way back home. All right, anyway, I'm thankful that the Lord has saved and sanctified me. It's been about six years since He saved me and then a year later. So He sanctified me, so that's five years. Lately, I've just been feeling really stressed and anxious about a lot of different things. And anyway, there's just been like a lot of weight on me. And last week, I was praying at Shayla's special meetings and the Lord just really showed me that He's there for me and He's going to help me through everything. And He's just put different people in my life that they're just always there. And I'm so thankful I have that, like the church family and I've got so many good role models to look up to. And I don't know what I would do without the Lord. Like I just can't imagine what my life would be like without this. And I just love Him so much. I'm so thankful I can be here in Sacramento. This is my first time. And I'm just, I'm just so happy with all the things the Lord has done and I want to go all the way with Him.
I'm so thankful for everything the Lord has done for me. He saved me when I was 10 in a backslidden condition and He sanctified me the same time. I haven't had many giants because I'm still young, but I know that I have a trust and I hope that if I ever do go through anything, which I probably will, He's there for me and I have like Him to lean on.
I'm thankful the Lord has done for me. I'm thankful He saved me the Wednesday before youth camp. And I just was down in Arizona for EMT school. And you know, I really noticed there was a lot of broken people down there with everything that they see and everything they go through on a daily basis. On the last night, as I was walking to my car, there was a, there was a young lady sitting there and I could tell she was very broken. I just went up to her and I started talking to her and she started asking me a lot of good questions. And you know, the Lord put it on my heart to start talking to her and she started asking me questions like, why am I here? What's the point of my life? And just, I could tell she was very broken. At the end of the conversation, she asked me, she's like, why are you, like, what do you get out of telling me this? And I told her, I was like, you know, this may be the only time you hear the truth. And I got to tell her about the rapture and I told her, I was like, it's not to scare you. It's, it's, it's a, it's a good thing. It's, it's, you have freedom for the rest of your life. And I was trying to wrap it around her head that you can live a life above sin and it's a better way. And she just said, what's the point of it? And I was like, this could be the only time you hear the truth. This is the only time you could hear. There's a lot of messed up things nowadays with Christianity and they're trying to fit it into our brains as young adults. And I was able to tell the truth and the next morning, she just, she texted me and she was like, thank you for sharing it with me. And you know, I don't know if she gave her life to Jesus, but I was able to plant the seed in her heart and I'm thankful that God gives us the opportunities and I want to go all the way with Him.
I'm thankful for all the Lord's done for me. I think we're supposed to come to God and like, so I'll do that.
I'm thankful that the Lord has saved me, that He sanctified me, that He filled me with the Holy Spirit and that He's kept me. I'm thankful that I also have the opportunity to say that the Lord has provided me with a wonderful and beautiful wife, like my friend, my brother Joshua. So I'm thankful for that, the opportunity, the privilege that I have. The Lord, He knows what He's doing and whatever He works out is always correct and always for the best and I can testify to that today. Today, I want to, I want to share a miracle that actually has happened in my life. It's not necessarily like the sun standing still or anything like that, but it's a miracle nonetheless and it's undeniably so. I'll give a little bit of context so that you guys can fully appreciate what the Lord did in this situation. I am pursuing engineering in my third year. I'm pursuing civil engineering and I'm taking a class that's called Material Science and Engineering. And I'm taking it with a professor that is notoriously difficult. He's the only professor that teaches the class, so I didn't have a choice. But I'm taking it with a professor that's notoriously difficult for being notoriously known for being difficult. He's over the top in his grading. Grades unnecessarily hard and he's known for that. And I think he takes pride in that fact, which I don't think is a good thing, but he does it nonetheless. And a part of the class is composing lab reports based on, you know, science, scientific research that we do. And I work with someone that actually took the class with him a few years back and he told me basically, hey, be prepared. You're going to get, you're going to get a C, you're going to get a B on this first lab report. It's just how it goes. Talking to people from, that are still at my school, but they're one grade above me, said the exact same thing. You know, they were basically, and they weren't saying it to be discouraging, but they were just like, prepare yourself because realistically, that's what's going to happen. And I met with my lab group, we compiled the report. Lots of hours went into that, which I thank God for giving me the strength to do that. But we turned in our report and we got the grades a week later. I walk into class one morning and my lab partners, they frantically look at me and they asked, did you see the report? and they asked, did you see the report? Did you see the grade? And my heart dropped because I was like, there's no way that these people are, you know, this excited if it's, you know, a good thing. I was kind of, I was worried. But my friend, he pulled out his, his phone and he showed me the grade and it was a 93. And, and I don't, I don't, you know, say that to glorify myself or our lab partners because by logic, there's no way that we should have gotten that grade. There's no way, you know, I'm not smarter than all of these people that have taken the class before me. I've, I've held discussions with them and I'm aware that these, these people are definitely smarter than me. But the Lord is, is a wonderful miracle worker and I don't know about you, but that's a miracle to me because I have never in my life heard of any group getting an A on, on one of the first labs in this, in this class. And it just, it really stopped me because I was like, there's, there's no way. This can't, it took me like a day to really realize how, like the gravity of what had happened. And I don't know, it, it might seem small, but to me that just, it really spoke in a great way of the majesty and the power and the provision of our God and I want to serve Him with, for the rest of my life.
Well, I want to give praise to God tonight. I'm so thankful that I can stand here, that I'm saved, sanctified, filled with this Holy Spirit. You know, I was just looking amongst the, all these young people and I was thinking, you know, what happened? I used to be, you know, young in high school and everything. It was playing basketball all day. And I just remember coming to Sacramento and always having a great time with the fellowship. And I was, I was, you know, in keeping with the, the weekend, I was thinking of like, you know, what was maybe my biggest giant? And I, I was thinking, you know, I've actually, it's like, it's lots of giants, you know? I, I remember really growing up and, you know, it was such a difficult thing for me to get saved. I would go down, I would pray and, and you know, nothing would happen. I would think, is this real? You know, and, but God just gave me the courage. He gave me the strength to just say, you know what? I don't care what people think. I, I was on the platform, I would say that I was saved, but I was, I didn't really believe what I was, you know, doing. And I just said, Lord, if this is real, please give it to me. And He did. And so, I mean, that was, that was one of the giants. I mean, then there's things on how do I pay for school? You know, getting into school. I remember looking at one time where I had like a hundred dollars in my bank account. Am I supposed to pay for tuition? And God made a way, you know? It's just, it's been one thing after another. How, what, what career to go in? How to get into school? I mean, just getting into nursing school was really difficult, but God made a way for me, you know? Like Brother Noah was saying, like I, I personally feel like I'm not very smart, but God opened the door, you know? Like, that's just the Lord. I want to give praise to God for that, you know? God helped me find a godly Christian wife that's, you know, that we could seek the Lord together. That was, I remember spending many hours asking God to just, you know, show me. What, what do I do? And I'm just so thankful for this gospel and that Jesus cares for me. He cares about the little things, you know, whether you have a hundred dollars in your bank account or the big stuff, about what career to go into, what job, what city to live in, where to go. He's always been there. And I know, you know, there's always the issues in life and, and giants, so to speak, that are in front of you. But I know God has already, I, I thank God that I can look back on the giants that have fallen and say, God, you've helped me in this and this and this. And I know you're gonna help me with this one too. I'm just so thankful for everything He's done. I want to go all the way.
Amen. With the Lord's help, tonight we take our text from 1 Timothy, chapter four, and we read verse 12. 1 Timothy 4, verse 12. Let no man despise thy youth, but be thou an example of the believer in word, in conversation, in charity, in spirit, in faith, in purity. Timothy here was a young pastor at Ephesus. He faced challenges and opposition in his ministry and service for the Lord, like we all will face as we serve the Lord in whatever capacity the Lord enables us to serve Him. Paul later writes into Timothy in 2 Timothy, chapter 3, verse 12. He says, "Yea, and all that will live godly in Christ Jesus shall suffer persecution." We are not an exemption to that. We all face challenges. There's a key word in this verse that is the key to unlocking what this verse means. There's a risk that you could misunderstand this verse and focus on the first aspect alone, which says, "Let no man despise thy youth." That seems reactionary. It seems as though it's telling you how to react when somebody tries to undermine your youth. But that is not what the Bible is trying to tell us here. It is important to note that. And the key word to understanding this is the word that comes after, is the word "but." The word "but" in our text is important to understanding what Paul was trying to convey to Timothy. "But" means rather. "But" presents an alternative. Essentially, Paul presents Timothy with a choice. You can either focus on not letting man despise your youth or you can focus on being an example of a believer. That is the choice. In one case, if you focus on not letting man despise your youth, you're fighting man. In the other case, if you focus on being an example of a believer, you're fighting with God. The Lord is working with you to win those spiritual battles. Which one do you want to choose? Do you want to fight man? Or do you want the Lord to be in the fight with you? Focusing on being a good example of a believer puts us on the offensive. Whilst focusing on let not letting man despise our youth puts us on the defensive. As young people, we face a number of challenges and giants in our lives, as it were. And some of them can seem small, but they have an habit of gaining weight and stature over time that they become massive and they become a hindrance to us really being able to live that fulfilled life of the believer that the Lord wants for us. And it starts small. I have two young girls. They're nine and eleven. And in that age, they start to become self-conscious and ask questions. Some of the challenges are, I feel nobody is listening to me. No one understands me. My ideas are not taken, being taken seriously. No one cares what I think. My needs are not being met in this church or in this circle. And they feel, well, I'm the only young person in this church. Why don't we allow that in our church? Why, why do you stop us from doing that? Show me where it says that in the Bible. I don't see anything wrong with that. And those questions becomes the giants that they're fighting. And I say this not to point fingers, like young people, this is a youth meeting. I say this to encourage us as young people to fight the right battle. Don't get me wrong, some of these challenges are real, they're valid concerns. But like Timothy was presented with a choice between fighting these type of battles or fighting the battles that hinder us from being a good example of a believer. The choice is ours. If the enemy succeeds in getting us to find the, fight the wrong battle, the enemy has succeeded in defeating us in the right battle. Because our attention is somewhere else. We ought to be drawing closer to God. We ought to be trying and seeking the Lord to help us to be that good example of a believer, but we're worrying about something else. And we lose time and we lose energy over that something else that profits very little. When the, the battle that we ought to be fighting that will draw us closer to the Lord, that would allow us to see God working in our lives, we neglect that battlefront. In the account of David and Goliath that we've been considering this weekend, we see David was underestimated or despised, if you like. Despised meaning looked down upon on multiple occasions. And the, it was explicit that it was as a result of his youth. Here was Saul said in 1 Samuel 17, verse 33. He says, "And Saul said to David, 'Thou art not able to go against this Philistine, to fight with him; for thou art but a youth,' and he, a man of war from his youth." In other words, you cannot fight this giant. You're not capable, you lack the experience, you lack the skill. You're not equipped to do this battle. Saul tried to help David by giving David his sword and his hammer. And we know that David asked him to go, but he could not. Sometimes we try to equip ourselves with tools that could help us in fighting cannon warfare, as it were. But we know that the, the weapons of our warfare are not cannon. We, we are not fighting man. We are fighting the enemy of our soul. And the tools and equipment we need for that is not knowing the right thing to say. That is not the tool. It's not knowing the right counterargument, that is not the tool. David could have taken offense at what Paul, Saul said to him for being told, no, you cannot. He could have taken issue with the Hameh of, the host of the Hameh of God because no one seemed to be listening to him. Neither was anybody standing up to fight the giant anyway. He could have taken his eyes off the giant and said, I cannot believe what you guys are doing. And that became his battle. And the giant was there still in the valley threatening the people of God and bringing the name of the Lord down, as it were. And David could have turned his attention to the Hameh, but no, he did not. You know, sometimes we turn our attentions to the wrong places. We look at our pastor, we look at our youth minister, we look at our Sunday school teacher, we look at our parents, we look at our teachers, we look at, you know, people. And when we do that and we focus our energy and thoughts on that, the real enemy of our soul goes cut free. On the battlefield that day, no one was standing up to be an example of a believer, except David. No one, even though they were referred to as the Hameh of God, certainly none of them was standing up for God. When Goliath saw David, we read that it disdained David, for he was but a youth and ruddy and of a fair countenance. Disdain means to consider David an unworthy adversary. It, it thought very little of David. You could say it looked down on David, it despised him because of his youth. It is important to know that, you know, with the size of Goliath and the size of David in comparison, Goliath could have said, I cannot believe you people send this small child to fight me. I don't have time for this, I'm going away. When you have a worthy adversary, call me, I'll come back. And there's an important lesson for us to hear, to, to learn there. The devil does not spare young people because they're young. The devil does not walk away and say, well, he's only still 13. It's only, he's only 10 or he's only 15, what can he do? I'll come back maybe when he's 30. No. The devil fights our young people just as much as they fight our old folks. Because the purpose of the devil is clear, to kill, to steal and... steal, and to destroy. And for the devil, the younger they are, the better for him. The enemy of our soul has no compassion for our young people. He doesn't say they're too young. To the devil, a young person who is standing for the Lord is fair game. Consider the alternative Paul presented Timothy with. Be thou an example of the believers. There's a difference between following examples and being an example. As young people, we're often encouraged to follow examples that we see before us, and that is a good thing. But Paul is taking it a step further. Even if in your age group, nobody is a good example, be that example of a believer. Even if in your school, you seem to be the only one, you don't see anyone else that you can follow in their footsteps. You chart that course yourself with the Lord helping you. On that day, in the battlefield, there was no one that was being an example of a believer. But David came into the picture and Lord helping him. He became that example of a believer. And guess what? When David stepped out with the Lord's help, in faith, believing in the Lord, and the Lord helped him to conquer the giants, guess what? He brought a host with him, because they all ran into the battle. Now the victory was for everybody to enjoy and to trust the Lord and praise the name of the Lord. And that is what the Lord can do with you. When you become that example, others who have a desire to follow the Lord will see you, will see your lives and say, "If the Lord can do it for him or her," they would gain faith and believe that the Lord can do it for them, too. You know, I once heard a young person say, this young person went to another pastor to complain about what is going on in his local church. And, you know, the other pastor encouraged him that, yes, you may see the need for this change or that change. Well, be the change that you want to see. And I challenge young people even tonight to be that example that you want to see. Don't complain that I don't see people my age that are living for the Lord. Well, you live for the Lord. You know, Caleb and Joshua, they were examples of believers. All twelve spies were faced with the same circumstances. They saw the same thing. But Caleb and Joshua, the Lord helping them with faith within, they were able to be an example of the believer and know that the Lord is able to go before us into this battle, that the Lord is able to conquer those giants in the land with us. You will not enter into the fight unless you believe the Lord can assure you victory. The three Hebrew children, you know, I think every now and again, they were not the only Hebrews in the land at that time. Now, the Bible didn't say what happens to the other Hebrews, but did some of them bow to that idol that was red up? But they were the examples. Perhaps they looked around. They looked at older Hebrews that had come into captivity before them or at the same time as them, and they saw them bowing down. And they perhaps at first couldn't believe what they were seeing. But the Lord helped them to be that example that they wanted to see. They stood firm. You know, it's comforting to know tonight, when you stand firm, the Lord will stand with you. They went into the fire, and guess who showed up in the fire with them, in the battle with them, in the heat of the battle? It was the fourth person in the fire. We believe it was the Lord Jesus Christ himself. You know, when you step out, when you be that example of a believer, the Lord stands with you. Paul outlines in the verse that we read avenues by which we can set examples of a believer in word, in conversation, in charity, in spirit, in faith, and in purity. I see these as battlefronts, if you like. The words we say. The Bible tells us that the tongue is unruly. It takes the Lord's help to tame it. Sometimes we say things that we didn't, if we had thought better, very quickly, perhaps we would have taken it back, but it's gone. You can't take it back. And it's a battle to control what we say, what we post. Our communication, is it one that is becoming of a believer? Is it one that exemplifies a believer? That is a battle we need the Lord to help us to have victory on. The words we use. The words are powerful. They can encourage, they can discourage. Words can, you know, edify, it can tear down. It's powerful. And the enemy uses that. The enemy understands the power of words. And the Lord can help us to be an example of a believer. What is a believer? Is one who has faith in the Lord. It's one who is following the Lord. It's one who believes in the power of the Lord. Paul talks about our conduct or our conversation, the way we conduct ourselves, the way we live our lives. Are we living our lives in a way that represents Christ? Are we living our lives in a way that one can look in and say, "That is a Christian going over there." You know, very recently, I told our church in Richmond that oftentimes we imagine, "What would it be like if Christ was here today? If I was living at a time Christ was living?" Well, you don't need to imagine that, because there are Christ-like people here. In fact, there are many here that claims to be Christ-like Christians. Therefore, it feels right here tonight the same way it felt when Christ was here, because they're Christ-like people here. Shouldn't that be the case? If every one of us tonight lives truly for Christ, if every one of us tonight truly represents Christ in every facet of our lives. You know, they talked about the Hurley Church turning the world upside down. I believe the same would happen if we all live for Christ. Paul talks about charity or love, being a way to exemplify a believer in the way we love those within the household of faith, those out there that, as we've heard tonight, we are in a lost and dying world. People need the Lord. And unless we have compassion and passion for soul to help in any way to bring them to the knowledge of the saving grace of Jesus Christ, who else is gonna tell them? But it starts with having a love deep within our hearts. It starts, as we've heard this weekend, about caring for who Christ cares for, loving what Christ loves and hating what Christ hates. It talks about exemplifying a believer in spirit. He that hath not the Spirit is none of it. Christ gave the disciples, gave the apostles the promise of the Spirit to be with them after he returned to heaven. And we need that Spirit in our lives. We need the Spirit of God working in our lives. And again, something I sometimes say to saints in Richmond, that oftentimes as Christians, we forget about the Holy Spirit. You know, the Holy Spirit is often the forgotten person in Trinity. We forget the important role that the Holy Spirit plays in our lives, and it starts with seeking our experiences of the Holy Ghost baptism. We need the Holy Spirit. When we have the Holy Spirit, we're exemplifying a believer. The believer needs the Spirit of God in his or her life. Paul talks about faith. We need faith to exemplify a believer. By definition, a believer is one who has faith. Oftentimes, and I think we've heard it again tonight, the hindrance to us getting saved is lack of faith. We can't just believe that what the Lord has promised is able to do. We cannot bring ourselves to believe that Jesus truly died for our sins, and he came into the world, he was rejected, he died on the cruel cross of Calvary, so that man can be reconciled unto God. You know, I like that prayer of that man. "I believe, Lord, but help my humble faith." That is what we need to be like tonight. We need faith to believe in the promises of God. We need faith to live as a true believer. And finally, it talks about purity, and my mind goes on to sanctification. Without holiness, it's impossible to see God, because God is holy. Without holiness, without purity in our lives, it's impossible to approach God, because God cannot be defiled by sin. God will not allow sin. God will not allow impurity. He is a holy God. We want to exemplify a believer in our trust and faith in the Lord. You know, it's interesting to think, I think it was mentioned earlier today, that in the end, the biggest giant in David's life was actually Saul, because it was a battle that he fought for a very long time. You know, Goliath was slain there and then, but we have those long-term battles in our lives that we must continue to fight. And, you know, those long-term battles in our lives, they're probably, we're gonna hear about it before the end of this special meeting, they're those internal battles, those ones we cannot get away from. But the important thing tonight, the important question, are you fighting the right battle? Are you fighting a personal battle? Are you fighting the battle of the Lord for good and right? You know, when we fight our personal battles, it's gonna wear us down. It's gonna drain us. It's gonna take our attention from the real battle we ought to be fighting, and oftentimes it ends in defeat. But when we fight the Lord's battle, we have an assurance of the Lord being with us. We have assurance that we're following that captain that's never lost a battle. When we are on the Lord's side, and the question is, are you on the Lord's side tonight? Are you fighting the right battle? May the Lord help us as we come to pray, to really search deep within ourselves, to ask ourselves that question. Am I fighting the right battle? I believe if we start to fight the right battle, there is victory ahead. Do you want victory? Well, fight the right battle. Fight a battle for rights, fight a battle of faith, and the Lord is gonna help us tonight. The song is 480.